Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals. This is Wednesday, June 28, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Our first order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag. If everyone would stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Richard.
Uh huh.
Commissioner Hickman. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Bullock. You have a quorum of four.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
I want to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion's made. Is there support?
Of support.
And supported. Any comments or questions on the motion? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items only. If someone's here who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, they can come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move on to approval of minutes from the regular meeting, August 24, 2022.
It seems like yesterday.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections?
Have we had any follow-up on that?
On?
On the issues at hand during that meeting?
It was tabled.
No.
Yeah. No follow-up?
There hasn't been anything as far as I know.
They didn't raise some in or anything?
They've attempted to submit. They've submitted some plans, however, they still required several variances. So they're in the attempt of coming up with a project that's in substantial compliance of the ordinance. We've had issues with that over the years. And so at this point, administration is not going to be bringing forward any plans that require that type of, those number of variances for a, for a development. So.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the minutes? Would you take your role, please?
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Business items. First item is consideration of a request for five variances for sign requirements at 29135 Ford Road. Before we move on to this, is the applicant present? Since we only have four commissioners here tonight, the requirement for us to pass any kind of variance is four positive votes. That would mean that all four of us would have to vote in the affirmative.
Sure.
And so, of course, if one person disagrees, then it's not passed. So you have the option of asking us to table this until the next meeting, when we hopefully would have a greater number of commissioners present. Or we can proceed tonight under those circumstances.
I think we can proceed. I don't have an issue.
Okay. Very good, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have the presentation of the consultant's report, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. As identified, we are here tonight to consider five variances for a proposed signage. This site is in relation to 29135 Ford Road. The site is comprised currently of two buildings that are fronting on Ford Road. Formerly, they were occupied by the Moose Lodge Fraternal Organization. And then the site, the rear of the property is actually occupied by a parking lot that is accessed via Pardo. The building is currently being renovated to operate a food hall and a martial arts studio. The owner has applied to install one standard building mounted sign on Ford Road, as well as two building-mounted electronic messaging centers, or some conventionally called LED signs, on the building as well. These EMC signs are proposed to be located near the second-story roof line, one on the east elevation and the other on the west. We just wanted to point out while these, the sides of the building are adjacent to parking lots, those parking lots are actually owned by the adjacent businesses. New Peak King actually owns the parking lot to the east of the building, and then the Allstate office owns the parking lot to the west. So this is in relation to the, to the fact of the need for some of the variances. Because of the five variances being requested, one is that the, a variance of 192 square feet above their permitted sign area total of 150. The second variance is in regard to the fact that, as I mentioned, these signs are being proposed, one on the east and one on the west side of the building, and the zoning ordinance only permits signs on the side of buildings if they are on a corner lot, or if they are, if they are adjacent to a parking lot or building entrance on a parking lot that is on their own property. So the second variance is to allow-
Excuse me, does the ordinance say "on your own property"?
I do believe, let's see, pardon me. I'm not exactly in clear the entire verbiage, but I do believe that it is, it is how has it been practiced that is intended for on that?
Well, I'm not concerned with past practice. I'm concerned with the actual language of the ordinance.
Right. So when it comes to those signs, we can say right here. Side, the ordinance officially states, "Side wall signs shall be allowed at one-half the permitted front-facing wall signage if the building wall is adjacent to a parking lot. Or in the case of a corner lot, each side of a building that faces a street shall be allowed a wall sign that meets the front or main road allowable sign area." So in this case, as, as mentioned, they are adjacent to parking lots. The applicant actually does have an agreement to utilize, to have a parking sharing agreement with the New Peak King parking lot. However, one of the issues then would be the fact that the signage allowed on that eastern facade would be one-half of the permitted frontage. So it'd be a maximum square footage of 75, and the square footage he's being requested is 84. So in, while the location variance might not necessarily be required, the, the fact of a sign, a sign on that elevation that is beyond the permitted signage would still be required. So a variance related to the si, the east wall variance is still required.
Not necessarily because it's of the location, but the size of the sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that could be rolled over into the first variance, actually, if we wanted to. So in one of the, just to point out, one of the practices we ensure is that when applying for variances, we apply, we identify the highest number that might be necessary. And then through the course of discussion, if we find that some of those variances might not be needed, they can be rescinded, but, and so that's allowed under the notification requirements. So if you feel like the other signage variance isn't required, you know, I still think in terms of property rights for the property owner and looking at the amount of, looking at the signage and the variances necessary, I still do think the consideration of the variances could be at least discussed with regards to that, that standard. So in addition to that, signs, the third variance is to allow for three building-mounted signs to be mounted on the second-story facade rather than the street-level facade. The ordinance does specifically state that all building-mounted signs shall be located within the street-level facade, meaning the first floor. So they do need a variance to allow them to be placed on the second floor. Fourth variance is the fact that the ordinance specifically states that not more than one changeable copy sign is permitted per location. The applicant is seeking to install the two changeable signs, so to allow for two instead of just one. And then the fifth variance is the fact that these changeable copy or electronic message centers are only permitted to be composed of 50% of a total wall sign or, or sign area, meaning if you have a 50-square-foot sign, 25-square-foot is supposed to be a static plastic face or channel-cut letters or something to that effect, and then 25 square feet be the actual changeable copy area or the LED location. In this particular case, the applicant would like to have 100% of those signs on the east and west be changeable copy, electronic LEDs. So those are the variances being considered. With regards to signage, the variance standards are specific related to signs. First, so you have our review in front of you. I'm just going to point out some of the highlights of these findings. With regard, one of the variance considerations is the fact that the variance is necessary because a conforming sign would be blocked from the sight of passing motorists due to existing building, trees, or other obstructions. So a conforming sign by the ordinance would be, one, a conforming sign would have to be located on Ford Road frontage, front facade, with 50% of the sign area composed of standard lettering or plastic face, and 50% of the sign being electronic LEDs, LED sign. And once again, located on the street frontage. There are street trees on Ford Road as part of the downtown streetscape. So for the, that, a conforming sign to be visible, those street trees would have to be removed. So a variance would be necessary because that would, a variance will allow the signs to be visible. If the variance is not granted, the signs would not be visible on that street-level facade location on Ford Road. And actually, the ordinance even gets, the ordinance standards for a variance get even more specific because they state that for criteria to grant the variance is necessary because the construction of a conforming sign would require significant tree removal from the area. As noted, there are some very mature growth trees on Ford Road that is part of the streetscape that has been installed for extensive amount of time. So for these signs to be visible, if it was in conformance on Ford Road at a street level, would require the removal of these trees. So by granting the variance, this would allow for the trees to remain, and it would allow for the signs to be visible. Another characteristic to consider for granting a variance is if it's necessary because the sign would be more appropriate in scale to the building. Once again, a conforming sign on Ford Road at the street level would be smaller in scale due to the existing amount of windows and door openings on that street-level facade. The amount of building wall that is available for a sign to occupy is, would result in a sign that's pretty, that would be a small percentage of that wall sign. So it would be disproportionate in scale to the amount of, the overall mass of the building on Ford. Whereas if the wall, whereas when the wall area is considered on the east and west facades, those would allow for the installation of the sign being proposed, which is a 12-foot by 8-foot sign. This sign is more proportional in configuration for a changeable copy sign because the amount of sign area would be, create letters and text that are visible to passing pedestrians and motorists on that east and west elevation, rather than a sign that's on Ford Road, which would be, which would be kind of elongated in scale. So we do believe that by locating these signs on the east and west elevation, it'd be proportionate in scale to the overall mass of the building in that, in that area. Aesthetics is actually another criteria to be considered to allow for the variance because the variance shall not adversely impact the character appearance of the building or parcel or the neighborhood. So as just discussed, I do, we do believe that by allowing a larger wall area to, by allowing the sign to be located on a larger wall area, the sign's scale and proportions would be more legible and more, more appropriate for the mass of the building. But then also, one thing I just wanted to point out is when it comes to these LED electronic messaging signs, sometimes if they're not operated correctly, they could be distracting to drivers and to residential neighborhoods. Now, this site isn't anywhere, is not near any residences. However, of course, it's on Ford Road, and so it potentially could impact motorists. But the ordinance already has specific sections that, which have specific requirements for the sign to operate. It's going to operate with a specific message frequency. The message change requirements where digital signs are created to ensure they do not negatively impact motorists or adjacent uses. And also, this, the zoning ordinance does require the installation of photo cells and dimming mechanisms. So that way, we can, we can ensure that the sign during the day is bright enough to be, be legible and read by motorists, but also it'll automatically dim at night, so there won't be excessive glare at all onto motorists. One other thing about the operation is that the operation of the sign would not allow for video to be displayed on the sign. It's intended to allow for messages that are, text messages to allow for advertising multiple events and, events at the, at the business. So I just wanted to point that out, that in terms of the aesthetics, an electronic LED sign already has ordinance requirements that'll ensure that it's going to operate aesthetically, pleasingly, and not cause glare to motorists. So in the end, the zoning board may grant a variance for the, of the requirements of the zoning ordinance upon finding that these criteria discussed, discussed in the letter have been met for the proposed variances requested. We do believe that the proposed sign, signage does satisfy the requirements of the ordinance criteria, and we would recommend that the ZBA grant the variances as requested based on the items identified. So at any point in time, I can take questions.
Well, why don't we come back to questions when it's time for the board to discuss the application? And in the meantime, we can hear the presentation by the applicant.
Sounds good. How you doing?
Good. And you are the owner of the-
I'm the owner, Mike Berry.
Okay.
And he is the sign installer.
I'm the sign installer.
Oh, no.
Okay.
So I got some pictures over here to show you guys.
Yeah, go ahead.
These are currently signs that are similar to what we have. That's the square footage of the signage for the building before. And this is the area that, how it's on.
That's previous signage.
That is.
Of course, we have two businesses. There are then two separate businesses. Okay. Was there anything else you wanted to?
Yeah, so we're approved as a mixed martial arts theater, a live performance theater. Typically, when you go to a theater, one of the main things that we see, if you go to AMC or just in old-school theaters, I think, didn't we used to have a theater in Garden City?
There used to be a theater, a movie theater. Yeah, just, just down the street from where you're at now.
Yeah, I think it was in the jewelry building, Orange Building.
Just, yeah.
It was in the second level, correct, so.
Well, no. They revamped it, and where all the businesses are just east of the jewelry store, that was the theater.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, good old times. We're trying to bring back a marquee or a destination point over here in Garden City. And one of the things that we do in a theater is we need to promote or let our events be known publicly, so we need these as a necessity for our business besides the fact of, you know, anything that has to do with variances. This is part of our business. So when we say that, how do we promote them? How do we let people know what's going on, what event is going on, what's scheduled? Part of these things is these theaters that we, this theater that we're planning on doing. And one of the main things that we want to do was the EMC sign on each side. Now, typically, if you look at the McDonald's, McDonald's has one sign up, but they have two sides. So basically, if you're coming from the east and the west, you can still see them, even though it's one side. We can't do that on our building because the building in the front of it, there's, we don't, we, the property in the front of it is not ours. There's no way to put it in the front where it can face being one sign. So we put one on the east side and one on the west side so that the traffic traveling east can see it on the west side and vice versa. So going forward, the EMCs, they're used as a marquee for our theater. I know in the downtown area, what we're trying to do in the downtown area is basically create a destination hub for people to come and have walking traffic. So if you look at a letter I kind of put together, and I'm sorry for not having my approach, I may approach it again. Sorry for not having so many. These are the considerations that we looked at. If you want to take some time and read it going forward. Inside the downtown area, we have, you have the Dairy Queen, you have a pharmacy, you have, you know, benches where people can sit down and just enjoy the greenery. What we're bringing to the downtown area is a theater that has live performances. It supports discipline, athleticism. On top of it, you know, it's going to be a destination hub for everybody in Garden City to enjoy. That's our plan for it.
Okay. Was there anything else at this time?
And in regards, since I'm the sign guy, in regards to the sign, any stipulations? If the ordinances or the variances get approved on like, what's going to be displayed on the sign? It's all guaranteed. Like you mentioned, the dimming is there, like there's auto-dimming functions, there's scheduled dimming functions on these signs, and there's lockouts from anybody, like just throwing up their videos and, you know, stuff that's going to be, you know, make the sign look like it's, it's going crazy. So they're going to limit it to just maybe two-liners, three-liners, simple text so that people know that there's a live performance going on at the theater. And that's all, you know, all lockable, password locked, and the dimming is password locked. Like, with these signs, they're very advanced, like in, in terms of making sure that it's operated a certain way. That's, that, that can be guaranteed. If any stipulations are, say he gets approved and you got to have one, two, three, that's all, that all can be done with these signs. That's, this is what I've been doing. This is what we usually do. We, we've installed multiple billboards, multiple message centers for small businesses and highway billboards. So we're familiar with anything like in regards to timing on the messages, colors that are allowed to use, what's not allowed to be used, and so forth for these message boards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Public comments and questions. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment? If they would come forward to the podium, please, and state your name and where you live, and not necessarily your street address, but the general location.
Okay. My name's John Murray, Lather Street.
Okay.
I'm interested in this because we have a brick-and-mortar issues to where we need to create advertisement promoting what's going on where someone can see it. These signs don't seem to be that out of line. And if they're done to where there's no way they can hurt somebody, I don't see why we cannot put it. I don't understand on the east and west side why they couldn't put it except for it is someone else's property. But yet, if we don't bring in businesses and don't keep progress going, and we need to advertise, we have to do something for these people. And the question I would have is, is, I don't know how long ago, but remember when we had the forensic tube lighting to where we went into where they didn't want it to be gaudy? From what I'm seeing here, his isn't gaudy. It's just bringing attention to what we're looking for. So I would like you guys to approve this and wish them well on their success.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak about the application? Seeing no one. Is there any written communications?
We received no written communications.
Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing at 6:56. And move on for the ZBA members' discussion. Do we have any members who wish to make comments or have questions?
I have.
Richard?
I have a few comments. I don't know if you want to cover A, B, C, D, and go down the line one at a time?
It would probably be easier to do it that way.
Okay. A, my only question is to verify, was there any measurement used just on the frontage or along the side where the sign would be placed? Because the way that I read it, the measurement was it had to be certain space on the front, and if their measurement for the variance was according to the frontage, because by the looks of the property, it would have been longer on the side. And I just want a clarification on this.
On the total frontage of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the maximum, according to the ordinance, is 150 feet. I, I kind of paced it off, and it looked to be close to 100 feet.
Right. So the ordinance reads that the sign, total signage allowed on the building is equal to one and a half lineal foot of, one and a half square foot of sign area for every lineal foot of frontage on Ford Road. So we look at the frontage of Ford Road, multiply that by one and a half, and, but as a maximum of 150. And then if there was, as a parking lot or an entrance, or, excuse me, a parking lot on the side of the building, or if it was on a corner, if it was a parking lot on the side of the building, then they receive, let me make sure I have it exactly right. Corner lot. So if it's a corner lot, then they're allowed front-
One on each side.
One, one on each side, and the sign, and the sign size is equal to the frontage on that corner lot. But still, the total allowable, the total allowable sign area of all building-mounted signs shall not exceed 150 square feet. And then if a, if a sign, if a sidewall is adjacent to a parking lot, they're permitted to one-half the permitted sign frontage wall sign. So if you're allowed 100 square foot on the front, you'd be allowed a 50-square-foot building, a sign on the side of the building that faces a parking lot. And then if there's a second public entrance, you, the sign on the side can equal to 25% on the, on the building front or main entrance. So it's all, all determined based on the measurement on the front.
So everything's based off, I'm, I just, I wanted to clarify aesthetically, looking at the pictures, I think it's going to look great because the side of the building is much bigger. We could have a building, say, 30 foot across on a 200-foot-deep lot that's three stories tall, and a sign that's 20 by 20 is going to look ridiculous on it. So, you know, it's, I think it'll look good where, where they have a place, at least some pictures that we saw. And I was just wondering if we take that into account or if it was based off of just frontage? So it is just off of frontage and not off-
Frontage with a maximum of 150 square feet. And then what, doesn't, doesn't it say that the side, if they're allowed side signs, that they should be 50% of the?
150, 75.
Of the-
50%, that's correct. 50% of the, of the-
Signage in the front?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, so.
But still, but, so- But still, but, so, the intent is so that for the whole, while, if the building, say, were 60, 60 feet in width, then they, they're allocated, let's see, they'd be what, 90? They'd be a 90 square foot wall sign on the front, and they would allow a 45 square foot wall sign on a parking lot side. So that would be permitted because they still don't meet the 150 foot maximum. So they'd get a 90 square foot sign on the front.
That would just give them one side, though.
Right. And only on one side, correct. So then if they had two parking lots on both sides, while technically the sign could be up to 45 square feet on both, the total of all three signs still has to be 150. So at that point, we let the property owner decide how they want to allocate that 150 amongst those three locations.
Yeah.
So if they wanted the frontage to be the biggest, they could do that. If they wanted to max out the 45 and 45 on the sides, they could do that. But then they would only get a 55 square foot or 60 square foot sign on the frontage. So we do work with the applicants and trying to let them do that. But there's, until they reach those maximum thresholds. But as mentioned, in this case, that they're allowed 150 square foot total. The proposed sign they want on Ford Road is 150 square feet. So that's why the two signs on the side are seeking a variance from the sign area totaling 192 square foot.
Okay, are there other, any other comments on the first?
No, not my first.
I, I would agree that because of the size of the building, it does warrant a slightly large, a slight increase in the size, the maximum size of the signage. And that would, I guess whether or not we, we decide that the extra 192 feet is appropriate or something less is still to be discussed. Let's move on though to B. Heard the table in this section of permitted building frontage. I believe that they're not restricted from having sidewall signs because there's no, nothing in the ordinance that says the parking lot, which is clearly on both sides of the building, has to be on their property.
While that is true in terms of the, the exact text of the ordinance, I believe that the reason and the policy in the past has limited it to parking lots that are owned by the property owners because by allowing signs on the side of the wall based on property not owned by the, by the applicants, any applicant, not just this particular case, but any case, it's granting them a right for signage to the property. And then, for example, the property owner to the east and west of this building could choose to build upright up to their lot line because it's their, like New Pig King's property and Allstate's property. They could build a sign, a building, zero frontage on Ford Road right on the side lot line and block these signs. Then it comes into the, a legal question of whether by an applicant that has signage on those sidewalls, they have a vested right to signage that would restrict the applicant, the other property owners from having their vested right to build, develop, and develop the property the way they see fit. So the intent of the ordinance is so to try and minimize those conflicts.
I don't believe the intent says that. And I understand the rationale for doing that, but.
Yeah, while, while the rationale might be there, you are correct that technically the ordinance doesn't.
We don't have the actual language in the ordinance to require that. So I believe that's mute in this case.
Right.
And I, I believe we have the ability to make the decision about interpreting the ordinance. And if everyone would agree with me in this case, my interpretation of the ordinance simply states if there is a parking lot, whether it's owned by the property owner or not, then they're allowed to have a sign on that side according to the language in our ordinance.
No, I understand that. Yeah, and you're right, you, as the ZBA, you can interpret it that way. I'm just advising the city that with, with regards to that standard, while you're, while the ordinance does not specifically have language that iterates, that identifies the issue I'm facing, I'm identifying, in the future, city could be opening itself up to litigation by other property owners. But that's a, that's a result of.
I would suggest that in the future, the city correct the language.
Exactly, yeah, that would be the case, is that we would, if we, if it was to be a concern, we'd have to fix it later, not now. So.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on then. The next variance request is about street level facades of a building. Now, your rationale for putting them up at, near the roof or second story of the building is that the trees block the view of the signs. And I don't know if you've driven by it or not, but I've driven by it a couple of times in both directions. And if the signs are at street level, they're not blocked. The trees are above that level, you can look under the trees and see the sign, and it's not an issue. The other thing is, if you, if you're going to put signs up by the roof of the building, you're going to have drivers going down the street, looking up like this, trying to read a sign, rather than looking straight ahead at the traffic in front of them. And it's going to create a traffic hazard. It's going to distract the drivers, and I think that would become an issue. I believe that street level signs would be perfectly adequate in this area on the sidewalls. The front wall is a different situation, and I think we can make exception for that. I think that is blocked by the trees because those trees are directly in front of the building, and that would be better raised up. Is there any other feelings about that?
Which side are you talking about?
Well, I'm, I'm saying both, both of the sides, east and west sides of the building, aren't obstructed if the sign is at the street level.
Okay.
At the first floor level. But if you put it up high, then you've got drivers looking up in the air to try to read the sign. And that creates an issue in itself, I think.
It, I had an issue with that before I saw this picture, and I can remember back seeing this. The moose is, was never at first level that was allowed. That was a neon sign, and it looks like you're walking into a gentleman's club or something in Vegas in 1953 with the neon light that was there. So if that wasn't distracting, and I don't recall that being a hotspot for accidents back in the day. Also, Mazoni Building, which we built in 1953, which is what I was asking Brian, I wrote the note earlier, didn't know, so I had to get on the phone and look. Technically, they have advertisement, they have a sign that says Mazoni up top second level. As for being distracted, I think with the size of the sign, you're not reading 11-point print, you're not trying to read our paper on the side of a building. It's going to be big enough that it gives you an opportunity as you're looking forward, I'm paying attention to my surrounding area anyhow, I'm not waiting till I'm right on it and then staring up and then rear-ending somebody. So to me, that makes sense. And as previously spoken about, some of the stuff that we need to revisit is the ground level. I would feel that it's more distracting if somebody's driving by and they're trying to look real quick to the side ground level, then you can't see ahead of you. Maybe you have a semi truck in front of you, maybe you have a SUV, you could have anything in front of you and you have to be right on top of it before you see it. If it's elevated, gives you time to notice it, gives you time to read it, you can check back on the, on your traffic, one, two, back to the road. Whereas if you're driving behind a larger vehicle, all of a sudden you see a light, whether it's dim or not, it's still going to catch your attention, you look, too late, you're in the back of somebody. Said, I'm fully in favor of it being elevated and us revisiting the first floor only. If somebody wanted to put in a bright light, different colored light, I believe in here, paper that we were given, not going with red, yellow, or blue, yellow, something like that. These guys have done their research and they know what colors work. Who's to say the next person does everything by the books and doesn't do research? And we have the moose sign at ground level. To me, that's a lot more distracting than something sophisticated, well researched and well planned out, than somebody that, well, we followed the rules, it's gaudy and you caused data accidents, but you're at ground level. So, yeah, that one kind of got me.
Any other comments on?
Yeah, I have to agree with him on that. Because when you're coming from the east to the west, that, that Chinese restaurant sits so far back, you're going to be able to see that, the sign on the east side, like, golly, a couple, three blocks away. So that's not going to be any deterrent as far as looking at it all that length of time you look over at it, see it. You know, you'd be done looking at it by the time you go by it. So you're not going to be distracted. The other sign, if you, if you put it down by the bottom on the west side, you got all them windows and everything, and you guys are probably going to be open at night and everything else, and that'll be silhouetting of light and everything, which is going to take away from the viewing of that sign because now you've got multiple visions coming up. In other words, you know, movement or whatever's in these windows. And being up in the top, you're going to be able to see it, you know, from the side, you know, from quite a ways, or even down there. I mean, you're going to see it from Middlebelt when you're turning it off on the Ford Road. So it's more conducive to have it up there, plus the size of it compared to the size of the building, that building would look stupid little. I mean, it would look.
We're not talking about size of the sign.
No, but I'm just saying, it just, as far as views, aesthetic, you know, being able to see it or being an inconvenience for drivers, I don't think so, not whatsoever. Not at all. I mean, you got that Andrews Drugs, remember that sign over there? That thing was bright and all them weird colors, and you sit there at the light, you couldn't hardly even look at it.
That sign went up before we actually had a sign ordinance.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm just giving you for instance of what it, with this one being higher in the colors they wanted, it'd be more subdued and easier to see and won't be a destructive, I wouldn't think.
Mr. Orte, did you have anything?
I'm kind of in favor of it being up high too, because he's got a parking spot right here. All it's going to take during the day is a van or any type of truck.
Well, by first floor, I, I would assume that it would be near the top of the first floor and not, not at ground level.
Could they install a post? Have it come off the building?
No, you can't have projecting sign.
But it's mounted at first floor level, correct?
I, I don't believe that we can have signs that project out.
Well, just some inspiration for you guys to consider, building mounted signs could at most be 18 inches away from the surface of the wall, but at most. And when you look at the width of the sign box for that, for the, an electronic message center, you know, you're probably looking at least nine or 10 inches, maybe more of that. The LED contractor would know better than I. Some other things to consider, while I understand the issue of a craning neck looking very high, the zoning ordinance does allow for pole signs, a maximum of 20 feet in height. You do have New Pig King that actually has a pole sign that is, I believe, at the maximum, well, maybe more like 18 feet high. But then on the other side of the street, on the north side of Middlebelt, you've got the multi-tenant signage for Garden City Town Center. That sign is actually almost 30 feet in, well, 25 feet in height-ish. And then you actually have, for somehow, Allstate has their building mounted sign located on their second floor above their awning. So, and finally, the application material doesn't specifically state like the actual top height of the sign being proposed, the LED signs on the east and west. You may want to ask the applicant what their intent is for the maximum height they intend, whether it is actually the roof line or whether it is a lower height. And maybe you can come to a determination of a height that's acceptable. But that's typically, the ZBA shouldn't be negotiating with the applicant, but if the applicant had a sign that was, say, 20 or 22 feet mounted from grade, that's something that's, you know, somewhat similar to a pole-mounted sign.
Ali, if I may, you're the sign designer, installer, what have you. Looking back at this, Mr. Ortiz said, the renderings that we got, is that pretty close to where it's going, is, is that going to be finished rendering, the pictures that we received at, at that elevation?
It's going to be, not exactly how that shows it, it's going to probably be from the roof line, say, probably two feet lower than the roof line.
Okay. So like the pole pit up top, right where that's.
Yes, it's down, down, six feet, so. Thank you.
The east side you show in your facade proposal being directly in line with the window on the east side, is that correct? So it's several feet down from the roof line?
Yes, the east side.
But the west side you would have up?
Yeah, it's going to be.
At the roof line?
Yes. If they need to be the same level, we have no problem.
Is that just due to the pivot on the roof of roof sign, where you guys need the anchor? Or was that more of an aesthetic?
No, that's.
So in other words, you could put it down to the same as the east and the west being equal.
You could say both elevations, 37 feet, whatever, maybe?
Yes. That's no problem.
Well, moving on for discussion. The next variance would be that the section states that not more than one changeable copy sign is permitted at the location, and you're asking for two changeable copy signs, each to be 100% of the, well, that would be the next variance. So you're asking for two changeable copy signs. Let's, let's include the second, or the next variance along with that because you're also asking that the changeable copy signs be 100% of the sign area. I would just like to say that when we started getting changeable copy signs in the city, the city spent almost a year developing a sign ordinance for the changeable copy signs. And it was the city's thought at that time that they needed to keep the size of the changeable copy signs down, and that's one reason they made them 50% of the total sign area. And this does not seem to meet the intent of the ordinance in that respect. We're looking at two extremely large changeable copy signs that are 100% of the sign area. And while I know we have some language in the ordinance to control the use of the sign and how the copy is changed, we haven't done a very good job in the past of enforcing that. And we have some signs, and I still, I think today we still have signs that have animation on them, which is not allowed. So this flies in the face of the intent of the ordinance, which isn't that old, really.
What, do you recall the year of that?
Uh, not exactly.
Looks like 2017.
17?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Could we agree that signs have come a long way just in that short amount of time? LED signs used to look pretty much like the moose sign. It was, you got three colors, the only thing you could change was it would flash or it would flash every minute. We, we don't have the technology we do today with the LED OEM.
No, I understand, they can do a lot more with them now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can, they can show you cartoons on them, which is prohibited in the ordinance.
Right.
And I think we should consider the, the reason for that is so as not to distract drivers. I mean, distracted driving is a big issue in the state. State's been trying to pass laws, now we won't be able to use the phone while we're driving because that's a distraction. There's other. There's other things that can be distractions. This is certainly a distraction, I think, and it, having a big distraction like that on each side of the building, near one of the busiest intersections in the county, I think is a recipe for creating traffic accidents. I.
A two-sided sign half a block down that all four corners can see with bright lights and cars coming and going all day and all night? We don't seem to have accidents every day coming and going out of McDonald's. This is going to be well placed. It's going to be.
McDonald's sign complies with the ordinance.
I would feel that that's more of a distraction, especially with the cars coming and going, if we want to talk about distraction, which we're not, we want to see what looks right.
The changeability of it is a big issue, and the McDonald's sign doesn't change very frequently.
Headlights do, that's distracting. If we're really going to push it, we need to get back to the city and, hey, let's enforce it. I think what they're doing is going to be classy, it's going to be upscale, it's going to bring people in, it's going to look good. Remember what this building looked like? These guys are making substantial investment in our community, and I think they're trying to do it the right way. They don't have a bunch of clowns on it, they don't have balloons, we don't have videos trying to play, they're not going bright firework colors, it's going to be text.
They can change that at a minute's notice, and you know that.
Yeah, but if you, if that's what they're going to do, why don't you continue to put that in there that?
It's already in there, they're not supposed to do it, and we haven't been able to regulate the other.
But the only thing is, I have to agree with him that we have a lot of updated, new stuff coming out, LEDs and all this stuff, with messages and all that stuff. If we start holding too much down, we're having hell of a time getting any business in here as it is. If we really start going crazy with it, we're going to have even more trouble with it. And I don't see any problem with them having different things up there, as long as it's not emotional-type animation like somebody boxing somebody, let's say, then people stare at that.
Yes, this board is.
This board has made variances to save large companies, large sums of money, which we shouldn't do, and we're not going to go back and talk about that. There's been a million things that have went through to help people that didn't have a need. These guys are trying to make it look better. It's in the downtown district. It's going to look phenomenal just going off the renderings. And the distraction argument, I think, is, it's just not there. If it was changing every 20 seconds, but like the gentleman said, they want people to be able to read it, so if it's three lines, it's not going to be every 10 seconds changing. They want people, the lights change 45 seconds at a time, maybe a minute and a half before you get through. Okay, well, I don't want somebody to read my sign. I don't want it there just to look gaudy and catch their attention so they go, oh, wow, cool, a sign. Oh, darn, let me go around the block so I can read it. It's going to stay there so that they get as much information out to as many people as they can. Now, if need be, we can put something in of, okay, because I'm all for it, we can put something with stipulation, as long as it changes, whatever Mr. May finds happy, it's got to stay on for five minutes at a time so it doesn't distract people, then so be it if that's something we could do.
Not so much as it changes so much. Who, what is the industry standard on how bright this thing could be?
The measure is nits, so with the LEDs on these signs, it reaches, this one reaches 9,500 nits, so it's pretty bright. That's enough for it that it's still visible during sunlight. Now, at night it's very, too, too bright, so that's why there's auto dimming on these signs. Because at night, if you left it on super bright, nobody's going to see it anyway. It's too bright to even read anything. So that's why it's automatically, you know, it's on there, it dims it down to keep it as gradually the day changes and a little dimmed down. Because nobody wants these signs super bright, that it just defeats the purpose of it.
I can sit on my front porch at, I think it's SoCal, that sign of theirs, I can see it a half mile away, over the top of the trees. That thing is so bright that the brightness of it would be the only consideration.
Yeah, given those older signs, that's why.
A simple, an easy read would be not too bad, but that bright at night, like during the day, I don't think it'd be a problem, but it's at night.
Yes, and that's why at night, that's why I mentioned, all these features are locked out even from the customer to use. Like, when we use all these signs, we put those features into our signs so that, you know, a customer says, oh, I want to put it as bright, you know, you're not going to be able to, it's got password protected, we only access, like, as the sign installers or sign manufacturers.
You have a timetable, and how much that's going to switch?
Not more than the McDonald's. McDonald's currently, the light's switching, I think it's, I was standing in front of it yesterday, I think it was like every five seconds.
Five seconds is too fast.
What is the, whatever the rules.
What are, what's our current?
What's the sign label?
So, so those pictures I took of McDonald's are probably 30 seconds apart, 20 seconds apart, the ones I got, so they got different pictures.
Okay, are you, what does it?
So, in the ordinance, it states for frequency of message changes, the message change cycle, every changeable message sign shall not exceed one change per eight seconds.
That's eight seconds.
Eight seconds.
Okay. Now, you say you don't need to change it very often?
No, not at all, just depending on.
So, to lessen the distraction factor, what say if we limited the change to every 30 seconds?
I don't have a issue.
Is that a problem?
Not at all.
Okay.
I don't have a issue.
I would be more comfortable with something like that.
Well, 10 seconds, five seconds is way too fast.
Yeah. That's, I mean, people are constantly looking back at it when it changes quickly to see what's going on, rather than, you know, look at it once and be done with it. Because if it takes a little while to change, people drive by it before it changes again.
If you make the light going east on Ford Road and you're at speed, so it's not the light just change, you're going at speed, 40 miles per hour or faster, but we're going to go with legal speed, you have X amount of time to see in front of you, you have X amount of time to react. Hopefully, you're driving correctly and you're three to four seconds behind a vehicle in front of you, right on top of them. So by the time you read that sign, there's four to five seconds just to read it, and I just, one, two, three, four, still keeping an eye. So if they're changing, you know, every eight, nobody's going to see it, you're going to get one car, even if you're changing it every 20 seconds, only two people are going to be going slow enough to read it, so I think it's, you know, it's a little, to have it up there a little bit longer, you don't want it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Do we, do we agree that 30 seconds would be a reasonable change?
Yeah.
Frequency?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Well, we can make that part of the requirement. Yeah, we can make that a condition. Also, we were talking about moving the west-facing sign down to the same level as the east-facing sign?
Yes.
Is that?
That's very.
That's good for you?
Looks for, it looks good for view, you know, balance.
And it's balanced, it's consistent when you're going in either direction?
Yeah, conformity is important too, so it'll actually be more performant with the whole, you know, aesthetic of the building, so. Yeah, there's no problem installation-wise and reinforcement on bringing it up or down, so if you guys have that stipulation, you have no problem.
Of course, I think it's more in line with the front of your building too, which is signage in the front.
Is there any other comments or questions about any of these before I kind of review it, what we're talking about? Okay, well, what we, okay, are we, are we all happy with the size, giving them another 192 square foot variance for the sign area, total sign area?
I think just for the size of the building, it would be conducive.
Okay, so that's, that's a go there. Do we want to make the parking lot issue an interpretation or just give them a variance to what past practice has been?
I would almost take the suggestion of interpretation.
Okay, we should make that a separate issue from the variance then.
Oh, since it's included, okay.
Okay, the third one is to allow them the higher location, they'll be both mounted as the east-facing sign at the same level as the east-facing sign?
Should have that. Should have that.
Yeah. We have to give them that, other than it has to be street level. So it would be the same as the east-facing sign. Both signs should be mounted at that level. Is that good? All right. And we would allow them two changeable copy signs at the location, one on the east and west, is that correct? With the condition that the frequency of change be no greater than every 30 seconds.
No less, no less than 30 seconds. If you go greater, they can do whatever they want, so you want to go less.
Okay, and, let's see, shall not exceed more than 50% of the total sign area. And we would allow them changeable copy signs of 100% of the sign area on the east and west facades. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Well, let's vote, let's do the motions rather than just lump it all together.
Do we?
Want to do them separately?
We can do them separately, or.
Or do four at once?
The other option would be to do the four being A, C, D, and E all at once, and then if you wanted to make a separate motion that addresses variance request B.
Interpretation of.
Stating that you make the motion that in the interpretation of the zoning board, it's permitted to have it on the side elevation.
Okay.
Is that the route we're going to go?
Yeah, yeah. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Start with the variances?
Variance A, to allow the variance of 192 square foot. Of C, to reflect on condition of both signs, east and west property to be mounted at same D, with, on the condition that the sign shall not change less, or no less than 30 seconds. D and E as stated. And with B, I would like to reflect that that is the.
Well, let's vote on this first, and we have to do the 100% of sign area on E.
Oh, and E to approve the 100% increase.
And then, just point of clarification, we wanted to read that the same elevation for C, it is going to be at the height of the proposed east elevation?
Yes.
Because we want the east one.
Yeah, the west sign.
West should be at the same height as the east.
As proposed.
All right.
Okay, so let's vote on the four variances, and then we'll do the interpretation separately.
Do we need a second?
So, is there a second?
I have a second.
Maiden seconded. Any comments or questions? You take your role, please.
Commissioner Richard?
Hi.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Now, we need one for the interpretation of B. Motion.
I'll make the interpretation of B for the, let's see, what was that?
Well, that's just simply saying that to meet that criteria, you don't, the property owner doesn't have to own the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah, because.
On the side of the building.
Okay, yeah.
To qualify for that.
Make it that address.
Sign location.
Yeah.
29901 Ford Road.
Feel free to paraphrase.
You give it that paraphrasing?
So, I think what we're going for is it's, you're making the interpretation, it's the motion that it's the interpretation of the ZBA that the applicant does not need to own the parking lot on either side to be eligible for a sign, a side-mounted signage.
Right. That's why we keep you around.
Do we have a support for that one?
I support that.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, take your role, please.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Okay, with those two conditions, I think you're all set. And we wish you a lot of luck with your business.
It looks very good.
I'd like to shake your hands, I didn't want to do this.
Looking forward to checking your place off.
Yeah, I've been looking forward to it. Looking forward to it.
When you guys propose to open.
Yeah, very much so.
When you guys propose to open.
It's some nice look for the change, nice look, nice style.
The rendering, it's like that's going to look sharp.
Yeah, it looks great.
It is, it's a million times better.
Yeah.
Thanks for investing in the city as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks again, thanks for your support.
Any new business?
No, other than the fact that actually no one submitted an application for, by the deadline for next month meeting, so there will not be a meeting next month.
Okay.
Hopefully this.
I was going to say, how many months is that?
Let me see.
Almost forgot what these guys look like.
I know, I might not feel that way, but one thing that is supposed to be a hallmark of a good ordinance is that the ZBA doesn't have to meet that often.
Yeah.
That's typically what the idea is.
Things are working when we don't have.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Did you have anything, Steve?
No.
Morgan?
No, fine.
Anthony?
No.
Brian?
Nothing, no.
Okay. Well, the next regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals won't be in July. We're waiting for the next application to schedule. So, hearing no other business?
Actually, if I may interrupt real quick, the papers that the gentleman handed us, do we need to file these away?
Yeah, I'll take those for the file. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, with that being said, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion maiden seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried, meeting's adjourned.